That's fine. Okay, hello everyone and welcome. This is the Special Board of Education meeting. We're in open session this evening. This is Monday, August 15, 2016, and I am calling this meeting to order. Today we have a public hearing regarding the proposed November referendum. And so, to get us started tonight, I'd like to call on Mike Berry to give a few comments to kick off the meeting, and we'll roll right into our speakers after that and continue through the meeting. Welcome, Mike.
So, I'll be brief. The public hearing tonight is an opportunity for public input on a proposed operating funds referendum. This topic has been presented previously at the July and August operations work groups. So, the proposal asks the school district taxpayers to grant additional levy authority to the Board of Education to be phased in over a four-year period, beginning in the fall of 2016. The phase-in would be $5 million of levy authority in the fall of '16, $5 million in the fall of '17, $8 million in the fall of '18, and $8 million in the fall of '19. That's a total of $26 million over four years. The additional levy authority, if granted, may be, could be, drawn upon by the Board of Education to the extent needed to support and maintain school district operations in the next several years. Our financial forecasts, which we have shared with the Board, show budget shortfalls greater than we have experienced in last year and this year, during which time, as you know, we have reduced 3% of our workforce over 121 FTE. So, the forecast is showing that conditions will be worse than those that we have recently seen. So, finally, the Board has the option of voting this evening or up to August 29th. That is because, as a practical matter, election ballots for the general election must be certified by August 30th to the county election officials. So, with that, this hearing tonight is an opportunity for citizen input prior to any official Board action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. We'll continue right into our speakers for the night. So, our first speaker will be Gary Berlott, followed by Max Turner. Gary? And you can correct me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong when you get up here. Sir, and since you're new, you have three minutes. So, go ahead and begin when you're ready.
I have, I read in the paper about the School Board wanting to have the teachers not pay 3% on their insurance, and there was some talk about taking money out of the maintenance budget for the schools, and that's the bee in my bonnet. I am absolutely opposed to you folks doing anything whatsoever with maintenance budgets. You're gonna break the school. You're gonna injure kids. You're gonna make them sick, but something will happen every time you skimp on maintenance. You pay for it, big. We built two libraries in this town for that very reason. They cheated. Don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Turner, followed by Mr. Frank Humphrey.
All right, so, so I read about this in the paper. I understand that the Madison School District is facing recent financial challenges, so I'm sort of on the fence with this referendum, and I have a few questions I'd like to ask all of you guys, if that's okay with you guys. So, my first question is, how did you come up with this $26 million number? And what safeguards, if any, would you use to protect taxpayers from the maximum levy amount if it's raised to $26 million for voters' approval of this referendum?
Yeah, typically during this particular part of the meeting, we don't do back and forth, but you're more than welcome to submit your questions, and we'll get the answers to you.
Okay. So, I'm sort of on the fence with this referendum. I see where you guys are coming from, but I'd like to make sure that tax, we're wise with not raising taxes too much to protect the taxpayer money. So, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Frank Humphrey, followed by Peter.
Good evening.
Best going.
I stand here today to, as I've had the opportunity to do on several occasions, first to represent Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, Mu, Tau, and Tau chapter, and then secondly, to represent myself as a taxpayer. I had a discussion with our chapter leadership, and it was really a surprise coming on the heels of the recent budget discussion. Our chapter stands, as we did before, adamantly opposed to increasing the levy or allowing for the leverage of increasing the levy. And the primary reason relates back to the issue that we have brought up before, and that is budget transparency. We don't believe that there was true budget transparency in the last set of discussions on the 2016-17 budget. Let me tell you the reason why, very quickly. The premise upon which that budget was based, and we all read, was equity. But Chairman Howard, President Howard, you asked the question of the superintendent, where in this budget is equity? And the response was, it's not there. And again, I would call the attention of the School Board to the Dane County Board, where they have established an equity policy. And before we start allocating additional resources to management, we ought to ensure that taxpayer dollars are being used to the optimum benefit, and that means no waste. The children in this district, at least the black children and those in special ed, are failing. Until those results are addressed, this district does not deserve more money, quite candidly. But reasonable people can disagree, and we understand that the taxpayers have the final say, but you as Board members really are the proxy for that. So, with that, we appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. We still want to engage the Board, but look at that process from January through June. Your numbers changed, and I saw the changes, and yet I didn't get any discussion or clarification on why budget numbers changed from the initial time to the other. I received your response. The chart that you presented on equity is a chart that Alpha Phi Alpha developed in concert with management staff, and then it was given back to us as a measurement tool. That's, that's really, I would say, trichinery, but I'm not gonna say that, but that's a lesson in being forthright. So, I appreciate the time tonight and would ask for your serious consideration about delaying this referendum until, until there are controls and safeguards in place to ensure better academic performance for students lagging in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight, Peter Best-Gon.
Thank you very much. My name's Peter Gascoigne, and a lot of people get that wrong, so not to worry. I'm the parent of a couple of students who've done many years here in Madison, and I'm an economist, and so I try to look ahead. And when I look ahead at the futures of this country, there are very few things that are perhaps more important than educating our kids and preparing them for the 21st century. So, whatever you come up with, I will vote for, and I trust that whatever that figure is, 26 million or whatever it may be, I trust that those numbers were put together appropriately. I also trust that, and I know how difficult, as an economist, it can be to project things so you can get things off a little bit, and you do have to revise from over and over again. I also would trust that it's made very clear to people just how much more they are being asked to fund once all the formulas are run. There's one aspect of this proposal that concerns me, and it's the $5 million. And the reason that concerns me is because you're, by having it on the ballot in November, you're asking for money in November for a school year that will have started two months earlier and a fiscal year that will have started four months earlier. And there's just something about that. It just feels, if it was an emergency situation, if this was something that, you know, circumstances had substantially changed in the last several months or so, I could understand it, but the forces that have brought this to the fore have been around for months, if not years. And by asking for money for the current school year, I'm thinking that that was something that perhaps would have been better done last spring or maybe even last week. But by doing it in November, it just seems, it seems rushed. It seems poorly planned, and, and it seems a bit presumptuous that you're gonna count on this money from, from, from the Madison taxpayer. I think that if, I, I think it would have been better if you, if you would just hold off on this $5 million. I know that it would be nice to have, obviously, but I'm just thinking that perhaps it might be better not to have on this, given the circumstances. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speakers here for this evening. And at this time, I would open it up for a little bit of discussion here. The superintendent, do you have any input you'd like to weigh in at this moment?
Yeah, Mike and I actually had a few follow-up comments in response to some Board member questions and concerns that were raised at the last meeting. So, we'll just take no more than like five to seven minutes, and then we'll pass it right back to you, James. I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me. I just, I don't know if any of the speakers are gonna be able to stay, but there were a couple of questions that maybe, that they asked, that maybe if you would take a few minutes and clear them up right away, because I'm not, I think that would, if they can't stay the whole time, but I think several of the questions there were important and that they should be clarified, and I think you can do that really quickly.
We can certainly build in answers to our opening comments, no problem, Dean. And I actually was thinking that most of our prepared comments do address many of the questions that already came up. Just a reminder to everyone that last week was when we brought our full proposal on a potential referendum to the Board. Our goal was to, first and foremost, demonstrate the need, and I hope that we did that. We also wanted to demonstrate some history in our track record of creating a more and more equitable budget, still work to be done over the last several years, and we wanted to demonstrate the proposal's affordability, which I hope we were able to accomplish last week. I also want to remind the Board that, as a superintendent of the district, I am encouraging you to take advantage of this November election. You know, all things considered, it is an opportunity not just to protect ourselves, although Mike is gonna talk a little bit about this referendum as an insurance policy, but to protect the momentum that we have created as a school district. I think our annual report that we just produced in July shows more evidence of the positive strides that we're making, and we wanna be able to continue making those strides on behalf of students, especially students who have not historically had the same advantages in our school district. So, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Mike, just to follow up on some of the open items, and we'll try to address the questions that just came up.
Sounds great. Thank you. So, as we wrote to the Board in response to questions that Dean had raised, ultimately we see this proposal as an insurance policy against an unknown state budget for the 2017-19 biennium. As recently as this past year, 2015-16, the state funding for K-12 in Wisconsin was zero on the revenue limit and zero on categorical aids. And the, the point of this is to look ahead, beyond September of '16, but to '17, '18, and '19, and to bring this to the attention of both the Board and the community, that our budget is at risk if we have funding that is in any way similar to what we have experienced in recent years. So, our assumption on the state budget is not meant to be draconian, overly dramatic, worst-case, sky is falling, none of that. We budgeted for $100 per pupil for '17, '18, and for '18, '19, which is roughly similar to the pattern that has occurred. You don't need an MBA, or you don't have to be an expert in school finance, to understand what is really going to shape up here. Less than 1% revenue growth must be matched by less than 1% expenditure growth. That is true of every school district, every business, every household budget. And what we're pointing out is that less than 1% expenditure growth is gonna be tough, is gonna have a major impact across the organization. So, we wanna warn the Board that that is the case, and you have to be prepared for that. The solution will be essentially wage freezes, staffing freezes, or staffing reductions, and then obviously the non-personnel budgets will be frozen or reduced in order to balance budgets in this environment. It's just really that simple. We are not necessarily, we don't, no one enjoys budget cutting, and certainly we don't either, but I hope that we have demonstrated through the previous 24 to 36 months that we have a discipline to balance budgets without asking for more money, as if it were, you know, just readily available. We understand the balance here. We've, as I said earlier, reduced 3% of our staff in the last 24 months alone. We've taken a hard line in health insurance. We have employees doing an employee premium contribution for the first time, and we've taken hundreds of smaller budget actions to prove that we are responsible and, and that we don't turn to asking for additional revenue unless we think it's absolutely necessary to preserve some semblance of, of normalcy in, in, in the school operations. So, yeah, so that's, you know, thus this proposal, really. Now, a couple of things that, that are really key to this, aside from just our own budget and, and immediate internal concerns, are the affordability for the community. It's already been mentioned a couple of times now. So, the, the key to the affordability issue, as we saw it, was to make sure that under no circumstances would our levy growth exceed 4%, and that's just a pure tax levy. The real key to this whole strategy is to say, if we have slow to moderate tax levy growth, even with this proposal, paired with really robust tax-based growth in this community, that we can keep this as both a good solution for the school district and as affordable for the average homeowner. That's, that's the key formula. Slow to moderate levy growth over, divided by really strong tax-based growth. I wanna mention that part of the tax-based growth, since we've worked on it all spring and summer, has to do with this growth in the city, and in particular, I wanna mention, I wanna mention TID 25. One of the speakers tonight was mentioning the importance of capital maintenance, and absolutely agree, and could cite lots of examples of why proper facility maintenance is important, and the old adage, stitch in time, is absolutely true when it comes to building maintenance. We have a TID 25 promissory note that the Board recently authorized that will, that we are earmarking for more than $5 million worth of facility maintenance. And we think that's really key, and we're excited to be making progress using those funds and the $41 million worth of improvements that we, that we asked the community to support back in April of '15. So, appreciate the comments and absolutely agree that facility maintenance is, is important. As for protection for the taxpayers, as I said, 4% is how we, how we backed into, essentially, this proposal of $5 million, $5 million, $8 million, $8 million. And lastly, although the $5 million appears in the November of '16 tax levy per our design, to address Peter's comments a moment ago, those funds were being, the idea was to levy in November of '16, but not to spend. It's essentially a strategy of levying and carrying forward so that you essentially have a two-step process, $5 million in the fall of '16 and $5 million in the fall of '17. The alternative to that was $10 million in the fall of '17, which in our modeling shows up as a real jolt, and it kind of runs counter to our intention of keeping the tax levy smooth and steady. So, that's, that's what that is all about. Last comment, November as opposed to next April. Essentially here, we know from our past budget development work that come April, the budget will have been long since developed or nearly developed. The idea was, if it's for timing purposes, November would give us a much more predictable environment in which to plan than would April.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mike. I'll open it up for some board discussion or questions at this point. Mr. Merges?
Let's start out with a question, which is on the 4%. We don't have full levy projections going out past '18, '19. We've got mill rate projections, but not full levy. Are there any levy increases besides '17, '18 that approach for, that in this model approach 4%? Or is that the only one?
We have, it's the only one that's even near. It's 3.97.
Right, right, 3.97. That's why we don't, so, so going beyond that, looking at the mill rate projections, it didn't look like any other ones would approach it, but, so that's kind of, that's the kicker. That's the one that approaches the 4%. And nothing, nothing '21, '22. Couple, actually a couple more questions and I'll have comments later, but Peter talked about transparency around tax, about, around tax impacts, and in particular, I think Peter was talking about tertiary aid. And though you can pull out numbers for tertiary aid for '18, '19 from this, and actually they're, they're listed, change in tertiary aid, but again, we don't go to the 26, the full 26 million, and then there's the lag year. So, if we were to go out four years, then the fifth year afterward, and say we spend the full 26 million in the fifth, in the fourth year, and then the fifth year would be the lag year where that would hit our equalization aid, correct?
Yes.
It would fully hit it, and the impact on equalization aid, tertiary aid estimated would be approximately 39 million?
Yeah, here we go, 26.
This is, Peter asked about transparency, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us there, because if you go, if you look at, I think it's '18, '19, it's, we tax an additional $24 million to spend an additional $18 million if we, if we tax to the max up to that point. And so, I'm trying to project that out to, I guess would be 2023, 22, 23, someplace in there. And is that, but that's, that's, that's still the working, that's the working number.
Yeah. Can I come in a little bit on that?
Yeah, I, you know, yeah, I'm not saying this judgmentally. I'm just saying it informationally.
You know, these are, these are models. We believe they're as good as the inputs, and we've tried to be careful about this. We had tax levy increase in fall of '15 of 4.71%. We originally projected for fall of '16, just a .4, and that's what would happen if we don't have a referendum, is a .4 increase. You might remember that state aid came in more favorably than we originally thought. So, so, but with this proposal, adding $5 million, we're looking at a 2.17% tax levy increase. Again, we're counting on some strong tax-based growth to offset that. Now, for fall of '17, 3.97% on the levy, and that's the peak year. Following that, we have a 3.26 levy projection for the fall of '18, and a 2.98 projection for the fall of '19. This was in one of the slides that we presented last, last month. And, and that does attempt to capture the, all the variables here, including TID 25 spending, including equalization aid impact. So, there's a lot of things moving around there, but we think these are responsible estimates. And essentially, it comes down to this. You were worried about the tax levy running away from us, right? And so, consider these factors. The state's probably going to give us no increase in levy authority to begin with. That has a very dulling effect on tax levy increases. That's the whole point, right? We have flat enrollment, right? We have essentially flat equalization aid. Those three combined produce a pretty flat tax levy, and we're putting this proposal on top of that, and that's why we're moving from 1% and 2% levy increases to two and a halfs and threes and low threes under this proposal. Honestly, if we didn't have those factors involved here, we wouldn't be proposing this. If we didn't have some certainty that our levy was under control, more so than we even want, and that we, and if we didn't feel we had really strong local tax base, then we couldn't responsibly sit here before you and say, we think this is reasonably affordable. We've thought about all that. We've done the best we can with our estimates, and we think we've arrived at a place that's, that we can recommend and feel, and feel okay about it.
I just wanna make one comment now on, on the 4% number, and that is, just, just kind of to further clarify, is that without this referendum, the levy, the levy increase in '17, '18 is projected to be almost, what, 2.5% or 2.? So, in fact, that this, and again, part of that's because of the lag year and things like that. In, in fact, the impact there is kind of, it's in somewhat, 2.37, somewhat preordained that there will be an impact in '17, '18. And I guess then, one philosophical comment at this point, which is that I always kind of think that when we talk about investing in our schools and investing in our students, that we should start with the question, what do they need? What do we need? As opposed to some formula around taxation. And I'm, and I'm not saying we should never look at the formulas around taxation, but I don't think that's the first thing we should be looking at. And one of the things that, you know, kind of, that, like I expressed last week, I'm uncomfortable with that $5 million in this, for the '16, '17 budget, and, you know, one way to get around that is to do $10 million in '17, '18, which is much more than 4%. And yet, to me, I'd be more comfortable with that. I think there's also that when we look at that 4%, as Mike indicated, that we don't get near it elsewhere, and maybe the total recurring amount of 26 million isn't sufficient. The 26 million assumes, at least for the next two years, approximately $1.8 million worth of reallocations. It assumes only a .75% base wage increase based on CPI, Consumer Price Index. It, it, it doesn't leave a lot of room for possible increases in things like healthcare. It doesn't leave a lot of room for either new programs or accelerated expansion of things that we're, that we're liking. And so- And so, I think that, you know, and I guess I'm making my major comments now, which I wasn't planning on doing, and I apologize for having led into this. I guess that leading into why, one of the reasons I'm more comfortable with April is that I think that if we would go to April, that perhaps we could have a conversation and bring our community to a place where we get more than an insurance policy, we get something exciting, and that we go beyond the $26 million. And I will say honestly, that I came into this thinking that $26 million was too much, and as I looked deeper and deeper, I became convinced that I don't think it's enough. And I don't think that in the timeline we have before us, going beyond the $26 million makes a whole lot of sense unless perhaps a restructure to do 9, 9, 9, and end up with 27 and skip the first year, which would give us more than 4%, which was something that would get us to 27, but that's not a heck of a lot more. And so, you know, I'll come back and talk more about why I think April's important, but one of the reasons, one of the biggest reasons is that I think that through an inclusive process and a community process, we can end up at a place that is beyond the 26. And I think that's probably, I would rather be there, so.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for answering the questions that people brought forward today. You did an excellent job of doing that. One question that I didn't hear as well answered was around, how in this process are we going to be responsive to what taxpayers are looking for and the direction that they're giving us if, in fact, a referendum does move forward? And it passes at this point, then how do we ensure that people's voices are heard? How we would be using any of those additional funds if we needed to? Since we're kind of bumping up here to having to decide on it, I don't think we can have that discussion now, but how do we put those safeguards in place so that that discussion does take place, so people do feel ownership?
I'll answer that question, and Mike, feel free to chime in. But I think what we want to remind not only the board but the public is that what we're asking for is taxing authority, not dollars, right? And therefore, someone used the word presumptuous earlier tonight. We think it would be presumptuous to try to determine in advance of the budget process itself of what we should do with those dollars. We think, and this process is evolving, that we're creating a more and more transparent, equitable, and sophisticated budgeting process that, on an annual basis, allows us to determine in real time what the most impactful next steps are for our district in any given year, building on what happened in the year before and given the contextual factors of that point in time. And my argument would be that the taxing authority allows us, the place where we get input onto how we use those funds, if we do choose to use them, is through the budget process itself. And I would invite the board to work with us and push us. To I think Frank's earlier point, how do we continue to get more transparent, more equitable, more impactful with our budget decisions through the budgeting process itself? So, that would be my argument. I can see TJ may disagree with me from his facial expression, but I'll let Mike chime in on that, too.
I was just going to say that we have a conversation later tonight about what the board will be doing this year, and I was saying that that links with that. That was the look that was.
And I think it's interesting because we've got our operating budget, this idea of having a referendum to give us more taxing authority, and we have TID 25. So, TID 25 is dollars, one-time dollars, that require that we create a spending plant together. And to TJ's earlier point, that bucket of money really lends itself, I think, to accelerating the work that we're already doing, to go above and beyond what we can do with our operating budgets, right? In a way that propels us forward and better meets, even better meets the needs of kids. Whereas I think what this referendum is doing is helping us preserve a way of working that isn't about the status quo, but is about, yeah, using these, better utilizing these processes we put in place to better meet the needs of children. Mike, what were you gonna add, if anything?
Yeah, I think Anna's point is --
It's important.
-- is related directly to annual budget work. Best use of funds is something that we sift and sort every year. What we're concerned about is that if we don't act, that we may well be doing budget development, not talking about best use of funds, but simply sorting through fairly severe budget-cutting scenarios.
That's right.
And so, we'd love to have the discussion on what is best and what is most appropriate use of funds. And again, the annual budget process is where we would do that.
That's right.
So, we don't really have a separate funding or separate series of outcomes or deliverables associated with this request. This request is this authority for the board to be used as you see fit when you do your annual budgets, or not used if you don't need it.
And part of the improvements that we've made with that annual budget cycle, just as a reminder, have helped us make quicker hiring decisions, has helped us diversify our staff significantly this year. I think we're about at triple the number of teachers of color that we typically hire in any given year. That's one of my many worries when it comes to this idea of pushing to April and having to almost do a budget and then a shadow budget. It makes it, it just significantly slows the process down, and I think will create multiple challenges.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Loomis?
Yeah, I have, I asked some questions yesterday. Thanks, Mike. Can I ask you a quick question?
Did you mic on?
Sorry. Thanks for sending the responses back to the questions that I sent last night. I know that quick turnaround is often not, you're able to do that, but I so we appreciate when it happens. I don't have a pondering process, but sometimes I just need to think of it, and then when the words come, I can send the message, otherwise I'm just sitting here talking. And I try to be concise, which is what I'm trying to do right now. I asked the question about salary increases across the board and specific towards SCAs and EAs, because similarly to what TJ mentioned earlier, there, you know, we ask myself why we want to do this. And for me, the question comes into the lack of proper stature and status that our highest policymakers give to education in our kids. They put the lie to saying that they put kids first by their practice and policy decisions. And when we aren't able to properly acknowledge the proper status of education and the staff in our teaching profession of where it should be at the highest levels, that's, and demonstrate that by policymakers doing everything they can to undermine public education. It puts the lie to what they're trying to do, and so, we're trying to make up the difference here. So, for years that I've been on the board and other discussions here, we're trying to work our way to overcome that message that got sent out there and properly address it, and also try to recover folks, their economic hit that they took. And we haven't, still haven't been able to do that because of the meager raises that the state caps us to do. We're stuck at it. So, my thoughts on this, and with this referendum, if I understood your remark back to me, we would have to ask another question to allow us to exceed the salary raise. Is that a second referendum question we would have to authorize? And can, is that? Now, and would it be additional money on top of what the 26? So, that's the question I should have asked last Monday, but it came to me more concisely today, I hope.
Okay. Yeah, let me try to respond. First, the way that we were discussing this issue through email included a proposal, which you had laid out, for potential raises in teacher salary and also EAS/EA. I don't think that meant to exclude other groups, but it focused on those.
Well, what I was trying to do with EASA was that I thought they should get higher than a 3% and 5% that I was looking at, because I think that they're starting out too low, and they should have a higher threshold to begin with.
I think, so, a couple things. The terminology that we were using in that email exchange was across-the-board increases of, there are different scenarios, 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%. And what we were trying to signal there was that per state statute now, we have to be very careful and intentional about how we talk about increases for staff, right? The across-the-board approach is capped under state law at CPIU. It's the base wage limit, and the board doesn't have the authority under law to entertain a 2%, 3%, 4%, 5% across-the-board range of options, simply not allowed. Now, some folks are aware from previous discussions that you can have a referendum specifically on overriding this base wage limit. It has not, we believe it's not been done yet in Wisconsin. It is, if it has, it's exceedingly rare. So, most districts have not gone down that path. That's not to say that districts haven't had operating referendum. In fact, they're becoming quite common. And so, most school districts are getting at the compensation issue in a different way. They're getting at it through an operational referendum to exceed the levy limits, which is what we're proposing, because ultimately, salaries and benefits are operational costs. So, that's some background on the kind of the two different paths you can travel. A special referendum on base wage, which we are not recommending and is rare, versus referendum to exceed revenue limits, which is the path we're going down. Now, the proposals that we put in front of the board, the $5 million, $5 million, $8 million, $8 million, are not enough, do not bring enough revenue to allow for a major restructuring or increase in the wages for teaching staff beyond what we're used to, which is steps, lanes, and base wage, nor for the EAS/EA proposal, where you had mentioned $3, $4, or $5 per hour. Our proposal does not go that far, and it's because we were approaching this really from a preventative or defensive mode, trying to protect just what is usual or customary to maintain our current standards. So, we can go as far as you did, and we would have to change the financials in this in order to travel that path.
All right.
Well, just one quick follow-up.
Oh, yeah.
Then, now, if we wanted to do that, would we have time to do it for November if we want to put a override? The, yeah, because I've had some discussion with foremen, and they've told me it has to only be done in April.
That's correct.
Can't be done in November?
That's right. Yeah, if you want to specifically address, if you want to address this concept of across-the-board wages.
There's some type of.
Would be April.
It has to always be, and that's a state code?
Yes.
Has to be then?
Yeah.
All right, well, we got time to talk about that, I guess. I don't know why.
Yeah.
I just want one more point. I know that the, to further kind of hammer my point, maybe I shouldn't, but there are two points. One point I want to make off of what the state did. They allowed state corrections budget, I think, 7% to 9% bump in salary, which demonstrates their priority. They prioritize locking people up, and there are problems in our correction system, no doubt about it. Been reading about it for months now, and they need some help there. But they jumped right all over that one. But education, which is the number-one thing people can do to help keep prisons, not send people to prisons, they're not about to touch the budgets there, they're about to cut them. So, I think that it, I just wanted you to understand my way of thinking here. And I think the only way you can hold them off to stop the damage that they do is to figure it out how to do it here. There is one method to do it. We could go to a referendum, and Madison always breaks ground. Maybe we should be the first. I'm not opposed to it. If we're able to do it, we should talk about it. And I think it was Ed at another meeting or in some discussion I've had with him, and maybe Mary, too, said that now that it's public and we're talking about it at this table, state legislators listen to us, and they like to do things to mess with us. They like to single out schools that they did it to Racine last year, and they'd like to do things just to mess with people, thinking about trying to do something better for their own community. So, I'm worried about the potential that they, between now and April, if we decide to go to April, they might pass some legislation that would prohibit us to do it. So, that's an argument for doing it in November. We've, now, that's something that we don't know about, but we're discussing it openly here, and I'm sure they are, too. So, we have to, I think we need to spend two more weeks trying to come up with what we want to do here and at our board meeting at the end of the month decide.
All right, Ms. Hughes.
Yeah, thanks. I've got several points. First of all, just because this is on the top of my mind, the $5 million this year, as I understand it, the sole reason for that is because it's better to go increase $5 million one year and $5 million the second year, rather than $0 the first year and $10 million the second year. I mean, it's easy, it works better if you smooth out the increases rather than hold steady and then jump. And that's a budgeting process that we are, a strategy that I know we followed in the past. And as I recall, our initial budgeting presumptions assume that we would be getting, what, $5 million, about $5 million less in state aid than we already, than we should in fact get. Is that right, Mike? Was that what the difference, something like that?
That's correct.
So, if we, in fact, raised the levy $5 million this year, we would be back to where we were originally planning to be in terms of a tax levy prior to knowing that in fact we were getting more state aid than we had previously been counting on.
We'd be slightly, will be slightly less. We had projected a 2.49% levy increase. We've dropped that down to .40, and under this proposal, it would increase back up to 2.17.
Okay. So, it's to the end of the year.
This fall.
Okay. You know, and in more general terms, I think we all agree, we've got to go to referendum. I mean, we can't, we can't accept, I don't think, as a board, the prospect of living with $100 per student projected increases, which is less than 1%. We don't want to be reducing our staffing levels by the amount that that would require us to do and all the other painful cuts that would compel us. So, I think, I think we all understand that we need to go to referendum. The question is how much they ask for and when to do it. The question is how much they ask for and when to do it. I understand the, the notion of thinking about having a community conversation to perhaps increase wages across the board. To my mind, if we were going to do something like that, and I'm not against it, but what we need to do, I think, is, is look at our compensation study and look at the whole bucket of money that we are devoting to salaries and benefits and seeing, are we really allocating that the best way? Or is there a better way to develop a compensation and benefit strategy that works best, works better for our employees, works better for the school district, works better for attracting and keeping the kind of high-quality staff we want? And I think we should have that conversation, it should be a collaborative conversation, but that's not going to be a quick conversation. And if we were going to, if we wanted to go to referendum in April, then we would have to make that decision by the end of January. And we just don't have time to do that, undertake that kind of study. I mean, we could do that, and I think we should do that, maybe we could shoot for the following April. There isn't anything that says if we go to referendum in November,
That's true.
We're precluded from going to referendum, you know, a year from April if, if we've done the work then that makes that a legitimate, or, or a sound approach that we can justify to the community. So I don't think, I don't think that if we go to referendum in November, we are forever precluded from undertaking that kind of study, and I hope we do. So I, I, I don't want to, you know, make that kind of theoretical pursuit for the perfect the enemy of the good here. I think that there's real value in going to referendum in November. I, I think we all recognize that. And I think what is different about this referendum as, different from what referendums in the past have been, is that this isn't about additional spending. We're not going to go to the community and say, give us this more authority so we can build this school, or so that we can do this additional maintenance, or whatever it is. It is a defensive measure to say, we need this authority as a protection against the legislature crippling us in our budgeting process for the next couple of years. I mean, it's as simple as that. So I think that's a simple message that we can get across, and we don't have to, nor do I think that we should tie it to any particular spending proposals. And let's just do that and have the assurance to know that we will be able to budget in the way that we want to, or at least continue our same trajectory for the next few years, regardless of what the legislature does. And if we want to take the time to really look at our compensation plan and see what we should be doing about that, let's do that. But let's, let's not, let's not hold this particular referendum hostage to that process, which I think will take a long time to do it right and do it in a way that best serves the interests of the school district.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. I, I think that what I've, what I've heard here today is that we have a few concerns. Concerns around making sure we have enough time to get some more public comments. There's some discussion that needs to happen around, you know, the use of the funds. I think that there's some board members that would like to have that discussion. How much are we going to ask for? Is there a way to ask for more money? I've heard that around the table today. We've heard from speakers about budget transparency and how we deal with that. But I think, most of all here, I think what board members are asking for is, let's just take maybe a couple of weeks here, answer some questions, look into this a little more, give the public a couple more weeks' time to comment. And next week, we have briefings. And, and that way, we have a chance to talk to individual board members and get them comfortable with their questions and answer those questions. I do realize that at the end of the month, that we're going to be doing the track race up the street when we vote to make sure we meet the deadlines for getting paperwork in if, if we were to vote at that point. But I do think that we do need to maybe take just a few more days here to have, answer some questions and a few more discussions, a little more discussion, so that board members can be at a point of comfort. And, and taxpayers, and I'm a taxpayer, and I feel as though I need to be a little more comfortable. And so, we have some questions that we can answer over the next week. And so, by no means does this means that we're not moving forward here with the November referendum. By no means does it mean that. It just means that we want to give board members a chance to get more comfortable with the November referendum. So I think asking for a week or so is not out of question. Mr.?
I, I agree that a week or so is, is, though it does put us up against the deadline is, is appropriate. But I want to clarify something that's kind of been almost on the table. And I, Dylan answered it in a memo a couple of weeks ago, but just the fine points of this, I'm not sure I'm a hundred percent clear on, and that is about what we can do, provided we have the funds, in terms of compensation changes outside of the contractual process. And I guess that the way I want to, the way that is, that my understanding is that we can only bargain up to CPI. But that we can unilaterally increase base wages beyond CPI.
So, that's where the devil is in the detail. Base wage
Okay, so the phrase base
Is
Okay.
What is bargained through a one-year collective bargaining agreement
Okay.
Set to CPIU unless there's a referendum in April for that July.
All right. This is the fine points I'm not clear on.
Additive or additional wages that would not necessarily be base, and I was actually just pulling up the law because it falls in what is prohibited versus what is allowed. You bargain base wage, additive merit, whatever you want to call, steps and lanes, right? That is pay for being here longer or getting more education. That is above base, that is an additive salary structure, and that's prohibited from bargaining and therefore is subject to unilateral, we use a, you know, consulting
And we could revise, we could revise our steps and lanes in such a way that lanes were defined by a week instead of a year. I, I mean, that's, that's an extreme example.
So that, right, there are a lot of ways
That, that, that there are ways you could do that. And so, if we, if we had adequate funds, there are ways outside of the referendum process that we could improve the compensation of our staff.
Absolutely.
But not base wages.
But not base wage.
That's the clar, that's the clarification that I was, I was looking for. Thank you.
Right, and, and the statute actually for base wage even gives you the referendum language
Right.
Of what it has to be.
Okay.
Yep.
So what I would recommend is that board members take this time between today and next week, Wednesday, to make sure we get all your questions answered and clarified here. Because we're still leaning towards voting this month. So, let's make sure we get our questions answered. Ms. Superintendent.
James, I just want to make one last comment, just for board members to consider as you're thinking this over in the next couple of weeks. And that gets back to the idea of delaying until April. And I, I appreciate the, the sentiment behind that idea. I think one of the things that we've been good at in partnership with the board, in partnership with MTI and our union partners, is to not create distractions where we don't need them, right? The state has provided us with such an unstable environment, we don't want to create more instability ourselves. And, right? So I, I think about how we conducted ourselves during the handbook development process, which I would consider a model for other districts across the state. And I want for our budgeting approach to be similar to that. Having come from districts that have dealt with severe budget cuts, I personally experienced what it's like, right? When you're, when you're sending out dozens and dozens and dozens of layoff notices and then potentially coming back and retracting those layoff notices and to maybe, you know, change course yet again. It is incredibly destabilizing for staff. So I, I say that to encourage you to think about the, the environment that we're creating. I too want to find ways to support our staffs financially. That's incredibly important. And I want to create a, a stable environment in which we can all function and do our best work. Thank you.
Thank you. So, seeing no other questions on this topic, and I know we could talk for quite a while, but again, we have time during next week to get these questions answered. I think that at this time, we'll be tabling the vote and, and, and so that would actually conclude then the public hearing portion of this meeting tonight and the discussion around referendum. So I think that's where we are with the referendum. Again, I encourage you all to get your questions answered over the next few days so that we can continue this process. Everyone take a deep breath, so we move into our last item on the agenda for tonight, and that is the board organizational meeting. We're not taking a break, just a deep breath.
Deep breath. I like it. James, isn't it all right if I ask Kelly and Lisa to join us
Uh-huh.
For this portion of the meeting?
Yes.
Kelly and Lisa, if you wouldn't mind coming on up here, we'll need one more chair, though. Is there an extra chair, maybe in the back? Oh, there's one by head.
Michael's chair.
Yeah, you can use Michael's chair.
Kelly, come over here.
Yeah, go sit by Michael. There you go.
I don't know, is Michael here?
Michael, you here?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Oh, great. I didn't use your chair.
Yeah? No.
Get his microphone, too.
Wait, Jim.
Please, with us, guys. All right. Okay, so, oh, we're still taking a deep breath, okay. All right. Board organizational meeting, would you like to make some opening comments, Madam Superintendent?
I do. We're gonna, this is our annual kind of organizational meeting of the year that we've established a couple of years ago. Who has the clicker? Oh, okay, I'll take that. Thanks, Lisa. What I want to do is a very quick reminder of the purpose of the different board meetings that we have, and then quickly lead into a discussion about topics for the upcoming year. Our team has tried to collect all of the topics that we've heard from you, got them down on a piece of paper. We want to double-check our thinking with you, make sure there's nothing that's missing or anything that's on the list that needs to come off of it. So we're going to spend the bulk of our time there, kind of systematically going through the, the topics for the upcoming year. And then at the end, we want to have a quick discussion about the potential, potentially moving some of our, the potential of moving some of our meetings to another day of the week. We just want to put it out there for consideration. So with that said, I'm going to dive right in. What you're going to want to have in front of you on your device or on paper, I think, is this one-pager. So if you wouldn't mind pulling that up now, since that's what we're going to be using to get through this part of the discussion. As a reminder, we have an instructional work group that meets once a month that exists to essentially preview policy items that are going to come to the board for approval at the regular board meeting, as well as strategy items related to instruction. We've got an operations work group, same deal, but on the operations side, where we preview items for vote, as well as strategy as it relates to operations. We've got our special meetings that are usually, I don't know, just sort of odd little meetings that we have to fit in at different times of the year, that don't cleanly fit into a work group. Our quarterly retreats, which are actually no longer going to be quarterly. In discuss, discussion with board officers, we decided that three times a year, a fall, a mid-year, and then a spring was sufficient when it comes to board retreat. But the, the idea behind the board retreat is to review district progress holistically and to do some long-term district planning together, to look further out, multiple years out, do some really deep strategic thinking together, which we think is important to do in conjunction with our board. And then, to the extent appropriate and possible and wanted by the board, to participate in some board development. And then, of course, we have the regular board meeting, which is where I present little updates on our progress on the strategic framework, as well as the very important work of the board, voting on both consent items as well as other key policies and decisions. So those are all the various kinds of meetings that we have as a group. Now, getting to the grid, what I, we're going to do is kind of walk through column by column. We're going to start with the instructional work group. Lisa's going to do a quick preview, and then we'll open it up for your ideas on what you think needs to be added or removed from the list. Then we'll go to Mike, and we'll do operations, same thing, what needs to be added or removed from the list. I'll talk about the quarterly retreats, and then we'll touch a little bit on the special meetings and regular board meetings at the end, which probably don't need, we don't need at least as much guidance on those as the other items. Does that sound like a plan? Okay, all right. Lisa, take it away with instructional work group.
Okay, so the full calendar looks like this that I'm referring to, and I'm going to take a look at the instructional work group, the third column down. And just to summarize, we tried to take into account some of the things that we've heard from you over the past year and things that you were expecting from us. And TJ, you and I kind of have a regular review on a monthly basis. And what I tried to do, what we tried to do, was capture some of the thinking that may have come up from past conversations and simply put it in a list, to honor some things maybe we couldn't get to last year, and to also honor the three-year evaluation cycle that we've already engaged in with some of our big plans. So you'll see that in the green section of the grid, there are three places there that are voting topics for us to take a look at, related to our big, our big plans, to include the special education plan, our tech plan, and then also summer school, which really relates to the budget for that.
Yeah, it's just pre-approval on the summer school
Yeah.
Plan and budget.
Yeah, so we tried to tease out where we knew there would be a vote
Yeah.
And adjust accordingly. And then some of the other updates that we listed are updates that we know are important to continue, like I said, we know actually emerged from beginning conversations this last year, or our expectations that you all have of us moving forward as, you hold us accountable for the work in some of these areas. So that's our best thinking at this time around instruction
Yeah.
Moving forward, and interested to hear if you have other thoughts, if these are the right areas or not around instruction.
Yeah, so why don't we pause there real quickly for any feedback on anything that you think needs to be added to this particular list or removed? What do you think, TJ?
First, Lisa, I appreciate the work in this, and I think you captured it well. I think it's, it's a good list. There's, one comment on, on this is that I think that as we go into the year, that, you know, we've kind of moved into majors and minors
Yeah.
In our, in our work groups.
We have.
And that we'd be very aware of, you know, if something's been a minor for a couple of years, maybe it's time for it to be a major. Some things just remain majors, I think. But I, but I think that, that that's one thing that comes out of this. I think that
Yeah.
Personally, I think that multiple meetings around middle school model, if we're, if we're going to be doing something around there, I think that, that not just one meeting, I, I think that that, that's, that's one thing I'd say. And then there's something else, which I'm not sure where it fits. It might fit under instructional work group, it might fit as a special, it might sit, fit as, as an ad hoc, it might fit as a special meeting. But I'd like to, and it might be actually given to operations, which is delve deeper into the SIP process and how the variations in the process, the standardizations in the process, who makes up the school improvement team, how, how they are selected, how the goals are set, how the, how the action steps are set and things like that. And I really think that, again, that might not be appropriate for instruction.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's worth thinking about.
But it, I don't know where it fits. And it was on my list of things that I didn't know where they fit.
Yeah.
So that's, that's something that I would be interested in. I think that the board should, you know, after three, four think that the board should, you know, after three, four years into this process, kind of look at it and, um, have some considerations and, 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 uh, share thoughts, concerns, successes around it, so.
I actually think that, I mean, I don't know, it might end up being a retreat topic, or, I mean, we'll play around with where it goes, but I think this idea is not, I, I think it, it's, um, an important one. Um, I know some of us have been considering whether or not the annual SIP cycle, especially as we go into possible deep work on instructional design, is actually doable, so, yeah, so we've been wondering about where we're going with the SIP process ourselves, I think it's a long-term strategy discussion maybe that's warranted for this upcoming year, yeah. Any other thoughts on this section?
Anna?
I was wondering if this, if possibly an update on the revised report cards would fit in to this category, I know, if this is, are we, we're putting them out there this year, correct?
We are, yeah.
So, I, and again, maybe that would be something to talk about in the summer, once we have a year under our belt.
Okay.
Great, great feedback.
Yeah, this is just kind of a general question that is prompted by looking across the board at these, and, you know, Lisa, looking at the proposed agenda items, it doesn't seem like there's gonna be major new initiatives this coming year, I know there's a lot of concern about initiative overload, so other than possibly the, um, the special education plan, that would probably be it, is that right?
I think that's right, I mean, a lot of the, the things in this list in particular, but I think it's probably true of operations too, are things that we have actually talked with you for a couple of years now on an annual cycle, and we just continue to bring back and go deeper, which is maybe a good sign. Um, I do think that middle school model is probably a biggie to TJ's point, um, and connected to that the middle school start time, but not a lot of change.
I would just clarify that people are, um, experiencing in stage manner pathways and common core, pathways implementation in common core, so if they're new, is, new is defined in two different ways.
Yeah.
You know, it's, one is new, is this the first time we've talked about it, no, certainly not.
That's right.
Two is, are people still, have people implemented them and developed a comfort level, probably not.
Yeah, right.
So, that's, and I think on the common core alignment, I think that that's, some have and some haven't, and the pathways, we're still, you know, we're year-round from actual implementation.
But we're not changing course. I think that's your, your thought, yeah.
Yeah?
My other comment, just because I know we always tend to add stuff to our list, that I'm, I'm just wondering, under that, we have the alternatives, so I think we're looking at, talking about alternative education programs.
We are.
I'm just wondering if we were gonna possibly do a deep dive around innovation and charters, if alternative education would not fit under that category, because that's really about innovative approaches, you know, charters is one approach, obviously alternative education, and it might fit in there and it might get something off that column.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, I really like that, yeah, love it. Other thoughts on things that you wanna see in this, or things that you don't think should be on it? Okay, are we ready to move on? Okay, operations work group, Mike, do you wanna do a quick touch base on this?
Sure, um, very quickly, Ed and I will be meeting in the next few weeks, um, along with board member Rupel, um, to, um, lay out the, uh, operations agenda. Operations tends to have cer- certain recurring major topics, and that's true of this look forward. First, budget and tax levy, I guess if there's one thing I'd like to, to, um, foreshadow, it's that we continue to accelerate budget development, starting earlier and earlier and earlier, and that's certainly going to happen again in 16, 17, so it might be showing up on the board agenda for operations as early as November.
Yeah.
Which is a little earlier than we've done in the past. Cash flow borrowing, um, is routine, it's early fall every year. Operations is where new charters, uh, initially are, are discussed by the board, and we'll have one, uh, or we have one potentially in the pipeline for this fall. Um, we'll be renewing the charters on Badger and Wright, as you might recall, they have one-year, um, short extensions, and this will be the full review. High-intensity partnerships, um, come through operations, this coming year will be CBITS and, um, behavioral health in schools for renewals. The long-range facility plan will be more prominent in operations. The Guys With Ties planning team will be back, um, at least twice, probably three times, uh, in the upcoming year, um, in operations. Policy reviews, um, after long operations meetings, then we make Dylan get on, on front of the board and do policy reviews, and, um, obviously, uh, you can see what's coming in the way of, uh, policy work. Um, and lastly, um, the employee handbook updates will make their way through operations as well. One that this mentioned, that, um, a TID 25, uh, development of that plan will, um, it's not called out specifically here, but it will occur in conjunction with, um, budget development. So, interested to see if there are topics that we could or should, um, add to, uh, the list for consideration.
I just wanna, oh, I'm so sorry, James, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, I'm just curious, how did we leave athletics, where are we with that?
Ask the question again?
Where did we leave athletics, how did we leave that?
Oh, athletics, it's actually in instruction, in the last, on the last bullet, it's part of that participation and access.
Wasn't it in operations? It was always in?
It was in instructions, at board direction.
It was one special meeting and then the rest was in instruction.
Ah.
Yeah, so we'll do our annual update on progress on athletics. Um, I was just gonna add quickly to Mike's, uh, little overview, just pointing out that chapter 9,000, uh, is, or includes the, um, equity policy, which came up, uh, by a speaker today, the idea of an equity policy, and I know TJ was a big part of creating the last one, um, so just wanted to flag that for everyone, that that is one of the, the few policies on the shortlist for this upcoming year.
Is that there, because it says here 900A and B, which are ethics?
It's just a misprint on my part, so 9,000 is one of three policies, 9,000A, B, and 9,001, which is equity system.
Yeah, I read this, I read this, the equity policy wasn't on there.
It should be, yeah. I, I didn't, I didn't catch it until now either. Okay.
Okay.
So, feedback on this, anything that you think needs to be added, is missing, or shouldn't be on this list?
Just with so few policies and so many this year, and I don't know what's anticipated for next year, do we wanna even this out in some sense and, and add half a policy suite or a quarter of a policy suite to this year?
So, I would always love to do more, but I think it's actually a lot of fun, um, but I think with the meat of these policies, each could be its own meeting, I think, um, and so I'm hesitant to then put a couple off the cuff. There may be some that come up during the year, we tend to load, so I've tried to leave it open so that ones that kind of come up out of cycle, um, would have an opportunity to fit in. Um, so that was just my rationale, certainly, the more policies the board wants to do, the happier I am, um, but that was kind of the rationale, the, the weight and the neediness of each of these, and then, a little slack that if something pops up out of cycle, we have the opportunity to discuss it.
I guess I, if you could, what's, what's on schedule for the following year, I, is, is kind of like.
Yeah, I think that's fair, let me pull it up real quick.
And, you know, and, and maybe not now, but an email later this week, and, and we can all kind of take a look at it and say, well, we could pull half of this or something, because if, if the following year's like this year was, we don't have much, much fun as you do.
Um, next year, so the year after is chapter 1,000, which is board event policies, um, and then chapter 8,000, which is personnel, um, which we've actually made a lot of changes already in, as we've done the handbooks, we've tried to align, so I actually don't think year four will be that heavy of a lift either. We kind of stacked the heavy ones in the first couple of years of the review and, listen on.
And then I've got one other thing on, I'm glad to hear the equity policies on there, and it, and it works well with, again, I'm not sure whether this is something that should be done in operations or whether it should be done as a special, a series of special meetings, but, um, I recognize that we have increased transparency around a lot of our budget doings. I think that, uh, as I've said in other meetings, I think that the timing, the transparency is key, I'm glad to hear Mike say that we're starting some of the budget work earlier in November before the board. I think that in alignment with the equi, with the equity policy, and the equity policy, which, you know, explicitly states that, uh, that, that, that equity may be achieved by directing resources in, in differen- differentially, um, I think that talking about reforming, changing the budget process, adjusting the budget process, so that the equity charts that Mr. Humphrey referred to earlier are, um, before the board and the public, earlier in the process as proposals, and for discussion and perhaps decision-making. I've mentioned the model of Middleton before, where a series of pieces of the budget to build the budget are put before the board of education, one by one, for, for amendment and vote, and then the preliminary budget is built after those, and I think that exploring some changes we can have that can increase the transparency and the inclusiveness of the process, again, recognizing improvements that have happened, um, would be something that I would like to see either in the operations work group or as a special meetings, and I think that, as you know, Mike said, we're starting in November, I think the sooner the better on this, because you get caught up in the work itself, uh, and, um, yeah, so that's something that, again, it could be in operations, it could be a couple of special meetings, is, is how I would see it.
So, is that a restructuring, uh, suggestion?
Uh, restructuring of the budget process, I think would be more of a, more than tweaks, um, less, more, uh, more than tweaks, but less than full-out reform. Um, I think, you know, taking pieces we have and incorporating them differently and, and different timing is, is what I'd, and, and if, you know, if we have these discussions, if we, if we looked at some things and the rest of the board doesn't, thinks that what we're doing currently is a better way to do it, then so be it. Um, but I, I do think that it's something that, you know, again, recognizing, and it interacts well with the equity policy, and, and I think that, uh, Mr. Humphrey's concerns are, are, um, legitimate, and I'm not sure we can ever, we can fully satisfy them, but I do think that we should try to, try to make some adaptations that would address at least some of them.
So, you're suggesting that we have this early in the, uh, operations process, have this discussion, I mean, obviously there are a little better.
Maybe, you know, I, either, again, either separate special meetings or through operations, perhaps that, you know, that, Mike said he wants to start, um, budget work with the, with the, with operations in November, perhaps, um, lay some of that out then, perhaps, I don't know what's on the October agenda for, for operations, uh, or as I said, you know, I think that two, maximum three special meetings it would take, um, if we wanted to do it that way, and maybe some combination of operations and special meetings. We did that, that's what we did with athletics last year, was a combination of, of, of workgroups.
We'll definitely take a look at it, TJ, yeah.
So, that's, that's, you know, that's what, what comes out for me from this, um, yeah.
And I, I do think if we were planning on kicking off the budget in November, usually we start with laying out the process, right, and we ask you for input on modifications to the process, so we can think about that and get your input in November, when we kick it off, and if there's some way to get some early thoughts out there, we would appreciate that. Anything else on operations before we move on?
Mr. You?
Yeah, and looking at, at the calendar, it looks like we'll have another busy year, and it looks like, I mean, it looks to me like the whole charter, alternative, innovative schools.
Yeah.
Suite of issues will be a major project that we'll be taking on in the fall, in addition to everything else. Um, just a few moments ago, I had been talking about, you know, looking at our compensation system, and I don't know how we would do that, whether that's a handbook process, whether we set up kind of a special committee if we're interested in doing it, but what I would suggest is that might be something for people to talk about in the board briefing and get, just kind of get a sense of what, what people might wanna do or what the possibilities are, there's nothing we can decide on there right now.
I think that's a good idea, I know, having spoken with Doug, um, and members of the, uh, team at MTI, I mean, they are, I think, very interested in, um, engaging with us on the results of the compensation study, um, through the handbook development process and not outside of it.
Yeah.
So, I would wanna be really sensitive to, to engaging them in that way. Okay. So, if it's all right, I'll go on to the retreats?
Yes, please.
So, retreats, as I already mentioned, we're wanting to streamline to three a year, a fall, mid-year, and spring. Um, uh, the mid-year would, uh, in each meeting, we would make sure to update the board on progress, but we would have, uh, a topic for long-term strategic thinking and planning. Um, the topics that we've been thinking about, that we think are critical for our future, um, approach is first and foremost instructional design. Um, I know it sounds a really jargony term, but it's really a process for helping schools best use their budget and allocation to meet the needs of real children in their schools. Um, so, this is something we wanna take a step back, really talk with you about, I think it gets to some of the discussions we've been having around equity, um, as well as, uh, choices about budgeting and allocation. Um, so, that's something that we would like to, to discuss with you, as well as, uh, this, this, uh, topic of charter strategy, innovative school strategy, alternative school strategy, um, just exploring where we are, um, when it comes to the design of school models that, um, help us accelerate outcomes for kids. So, that, that's the other topic we'd like to see explored at a retreat, we think it's really appropriate for that environment. Um, and of course, we always wanna build in time for some annual goal setting with the board. So, I'll pause there, anything that you don't like about what I said, anything you'd like, um, for us to do in addition to what I put out there? Sound okay?
I think we're on board.
That's great, love it. Um, okay, and then last but not least, I just wanna go back to the regular and special meetings, um, I don't think there should be anything too surprising in here, so I'm not gonna go through a bullet by bullet, but, um, kind of the typical stuff is listed under special meetings, um, including our BEP mid-year review. Um, you'll see the mid-year review is in a special meeting, um, this is one of those things where we're kind of doing a combination of work group and special meeting, but the actual voting on the BEP policy itself is part of the operation work group, because it's a policy, um, and then, regular board meetings, you know, there's not a whole lot to discuss there. Thoughts? Go ahead, Anna.
Um, so, the different topics that I have down here are just sort of areas that I have interest in hearing more about, so, I'm, they kind of fall into the special meetings or they could be lumped into some of the other topics. I do think one thing that we'll probably have to come back to is an update around, um, well, I think we would have further discussion around our EROs, particularly if we're looking at any changes based upon the review, I'm not really sure where that would, what column that fits into.
Yeah.
Um, under the BEP mid-year review, I would like to see a little bit more information covered in regard to our seclusion and restraint data.
No, I, what? I didn't hear you.
I would just like more information around our seclusion and restraint data and any, um, strategies that we're using, I feel like it fits into the BEP, so perhaps that could be part of that discussion.
Yeah.
Um, the other topic is really around, what are we doing around open enrollment? Um, and I guess what I'm asking is what are we doing to try to decrease open enrollment now, what are some strategies we're using, where are we at with that, so perhaps that fits under enrollment reports.
Yeah, I think it does.
So, those were the, the other topics.
Thank you. I do think some of these report cards, open enrollment lend themselves well to the regular board meeting superintendent updates. I do think some of these report cards, open enrollment lend themselves well to the regular Board Meeting Superintendent Updates. I think we will have to really think about EROs, yeah. Especially given the discussion that's been happening of late. I don't, I think once we know our strategy on better defining the roles and responsibilities of EROs, and I think a few things need to play out before we can decide on how it fits into our, our discussion calendar. It's hard for me to know where to put it yet. Okay, but we'll definitely, I've got it on the list. Yeah, okay.
Okay, TJ?
Anna's mentioning seclusion restraint in the context of the BEP updates reminded me that, that I'd like to see some kind of data and information around bullying in those. And we don't, you know, we have a bullying kind of reporting system that I, that should track in some sense separately than the OASIS tracking the BEP infractions, yet I've never seen anything out of it. And if you look at the climate data, bullying is clearly.
It's a big issue for us.
Clearly an issue. So if we can incorporate that in the BEP, or maybe, maybe elsewhere, but.
Yeah, I mean, bullying, just so you know, when it comes to the internal administrative team's work is something that we have put on the docket to really grapple with this year. We just want to understand more about what's underneath the climate data, right? We just need to get a better handle on what's actually going on before we can figure out what to do about it. So we'll be doing some real internal reflection on bullying, and that's more for you to know, but that's, that's on our list of priorities. Okay. All right, excellent. So process-wise, we will take what you've done, incorporate it into our list, and try to map out the entire year's calendar. That calendar, we'll then go to each of the Work Group Chairs, TJ and Ed, for their review and refinement. And then our last stop will be to show it to Board Officers holistically with the regular Board Meeting topics and everything built out, where they'll have some say, and then we'll send it out. And as long as everyone knows, it's a living and breathing document, and things come up, and we make shifts along the way, we'll at least have our roadmap for the year. Okay, excellent. Okay, so last quick topic of discussion, if you don't mind, entertaining me and Kelly, is on the Board Meeting Days of the Week.
Oh, okay.
So this is something we brought up earlier this year, just for consideration. And I think our issue is we want to serve you well. We want to serve the Board well. And having meetings on a Monday night makes it difficult for us to serve you well. It's very difficult turnaround time on Monday to make sure we get you information and time for you to actually consume it and be ready for the Board Meeting that night. So that's first and foremost why we are even suggesting that we move it. The secondary reason is because we also want to take care of our staff. I want to take care of the staff. And I want you guys, not you, to be able to spend some time with your families on Sundays, right? And I want for our staff, many of whom have families and young children, to be able to spend some time with their families and not be, you know, tied to their cellphone or computer all day. So I'm just trying to figure out a way of working that's going to help us do better as an organization. We put out this idea that maybe we could switch it to a Tuesday. That would be probably an ideal state, because we wouldn't have to change anything else about our processes. Board packets would still go out on Thursdays. It would only give us more time, an extra day, to be able to respond to questions and get prepared. Obviously, Wednesday is another option. I know there are all kinds of barriers to this issue, but I want to put it out there. Kelly, did a little homework on this. Do you want to say a little bit about what you found out, Kelly?
Yeah, just regarding some of the known barriers. One of them is regarding the elementary PTO. PTA's do tend to meet on Mondays, and that's historic, or on Tuesdays. That's historical, primarily because it's not a Board Night. It is one of the reasons why they pick Tuesdays. So I have talked to a number of principals, a number of PTO kind of presidents, just floating the idea. And the general feedback I got was actually for them, the later in the week, the better. So if they moved to Thursdays, they would be thrilled, mostly because the parents don't want to necessarily meet earlier in the week either. But they did ask that if we considered a change, we do it with enough notice. So six months, maybe even a year of notice for calendar planning for them was their initial feedback. The other barrier that is a known barrier that we feel is our Cole Center parking lot, which can be complicating when there's a basketball game, particularly a big basketball game at the Cole Center. So we do know that in the fall, there are traditionally more basketball games at home later on in the week. You know, the basketball team doesn't like to play on Monday nights either. So we would have more conflicts later on in the week. One recommended, I work around on that, is I know the Board has mentioned in the past the idea of moving the meetings around the district a little bit to get more accessibility across the district. If interested, we could look into ideas like having the work group meetings at Lappam or in our new beautiful East Auditorium, once it's open, as a way of also getting around the district. So if there are conflicts, we would know well in advance, and we'd just have to plan for that. The other thing I just wanted to point out on the slide is that this isn't really an all-or-nothing approach. We could try some things if the Board is interested. We could try moving just work group meetings versus full regular meetings if the Board wanted, for example. Just wanted to make sure you knew that we weren't, you know, suggesting any boxed idea. We're welcome to trying some things if you're interested.
So we'll stop there and open it up to you, James, and the Board.
My work schedule still won't allow me to do Tuesdays, and I checked, and Mary spoke with Mary, and I can't, it's the month of January and February, but for those months, I teach Tuesday nights. And, and they're not very flexible on that. The Wednesdays I'd be open to, if that's, if that's a possibility. I think that, you know, there's kind of two pieces of, well, three pieces. There's lead time, response time, and, and then, you know, scheduling around that. And I guess that part, you know, and that's a two-way thing, is that, you know, when will Board Members, will, will Board Members continue to read things on Sundays and Mondays regardless? In which case, not much changes. And so I guess that, that we need to kind of look at all our roles in this. And, but again, I apologize if it causes inconvenience to others, but I, Tuesdays for the month of January and February are just impossible for me. And Thursdays for the month of July and August, for that matter. So. Mayia?
With regards to Wednesdays, Student Senate meets on Wednesdays, so that would be a barrier for us and a barrier for Dylan. So that wouldn't be super great, but on the other hand, if there was an important topic, it would give students the opportunity to come down and, like, give their input about it. So it might be good in some cases, but just on a general basis, it wouldn't be super great for us.
Unless you had to, you'd have to switch your meeting to another night. Yeah.
Yeah, Thursdays are probably the most difficult days, because it's high school, heavy sports night. So you're really jumping into it when you, I mean, football's on Thursdays, basketball's on Thursdays. Just everything we do sports-wise is on Thursdays, so I just think Thursdays is just out.
I agree with that.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
What about this idea of Wednesday? We're not making a decision right now. We would just explore it for a future date. Any other thoughts about Wednesday? I hear Amea's concerned.
Is there any reason why Student Senate couldn't reschedule their meetings to Tuesdays?
We can. It's just that there are a lot of activities that the students have, and it's been our ritual for the past couple of years. I can bring it up again, but we did talk about meeting times last year, and it just seemed that Wednesday was most convenient.
Yeah, I think it's another good example of why we might want to plan a year, a year out. We know that multiple calendars have been set at this, including your own, have been voted on and approved for this year.
Right.
Yeah, Wednesdays is sort of my sacred day. And, yeah, the education meetings are on Wednesdays, but I would say Tuesday, Wednesdays are indeed probably the top two days of consideration. So.
Okay.
So, Tuesday, Wednesdays.
Anyone else? Ed?
Any, any nights fine with me. This is my highest priority.
Right on. Love it. Okay. It's not, I mean, Tuesday, it sounds like TJ's got an immovable barrier to Tuesday, which says to me that Wednesday is our only viable option. So what I would, knowing that you guys can't change it now, but maybe a year from now, you'd be able to make an adjustment. And I would suggest that we, Kelly and I, take a look at what, and bar what that would entail, because it would probably change the Board Packet Day, right? Like, it might go out, making this up on Friday.
Friday.
Yeah. Which should have its own problems, but we just might not get out there as early as we want to every Friday. But, you know, that's better than nothing. So why don't we just kind of scope out what that change would entail?
Take a look at it.
You know, and then we make a decision. TJ?
I would ask that if the Board Packet were to go out Friday to the Board Members, that you consider looking at going out to the public on Friday also if we move it to Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
Even if it's, you know, to the Board, at eight in the morning and the, and the public. But I think that a couple of people have, particularly around our very popular topic last week on Educational Resource Officers, were very kind of taken a little aback by how little time there was. And so, you know, that, if you go, if, if we have Wednesday meetings, I think, I think that a Monday release is really hard of the info of the agendas.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
Why don't we send it, why don't we make it available to the public same time we do? Is there a problem with that?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, 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 no, I know.
Yeah.
Well, you said maybe early.
Well, what I say is, well, right now, what we have is, is that we have, you know, I mean, we have the stagger between when it's released to the Board and when it's released to the public. And I guess that if we, if it's released to the Board on Friday, we'd probably have to get rid of the stagger, I guess is what I'm pointing out.
Yeah, it would be worth looking at about the stagger.
So let's allow Administration to look at it and answer some of these questions. And so I think we're in a good place for Administration to do a deep dive here.
Thank you for considering it, everyone.
Pardon?
Look, we want, I also, I think, I can speak for all of us, we're really sympathetic to late Sunday night emails from us asking for stuff like an hour later or something, but we're really sympathetic to that. We understand. We'd like to support a way that would get you guys less pressure on that. That's such, it is unrealistic turnaround lots of times. So we understand that.
What about no emails after 12:00 afternoon?
I like it, James.
All right, so we'll consider that one. All right, so any final questions? Seeing none, I move a German. All in favor?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi, Michael. Thank you.